Okay, call to order.
We'll call.
We'll call. Vance.
Here.
Blazinick.
Here.
Ridley.
Here.
Kramer.
Here.
Risma.
Here.
All here in the present.
Okay, we do have a request to add one more thing. Bobby, what is it?
The Awakened Signature Card.
Awakened Signature Card.
I had sent it to him by.
Sorry about that. That will be number seven.
Perfect, thank you.
Anything else? Anybody have anything that day? Okay, a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Is there support?
Second.
Smaller favor.
Hi.
Hi.
Any public comment on the agenda items? Anybody have any comments? Okay, we have with us today Mr. Matt Cross from Plunkett and Cooney. I appreciate you taking the time to be with us today and we had a few, we had four or five responses to the RFP and we narrowed it down to two and you were one of them.
Great, excited to be here.
Yeah, I've just read through your resume a few times and anybody has any specific questions, Jay, you look like you've got a few too.
I want to come prepared.
Just talking about your experience, about 10 years, is that what I?
That's right.
Now, in terms of your strength, in terms of what you do, is it just advising on municipal law or do you do the small claims tax tribunal?
Do you do those as well? Yeah, for City Potaski, we do those.
Okay, then I'll kind of ask you to run down what your entire scope in terms of what you would handle versus what you would hand off to somebody else?
Sure, well, actually, the tax tribunal thing is probably something I would hand off to Jim Murray, our managing partner, he does that. I kind of just fill in for Jim in the tax tribunal.
And that is the full tax tribunal or the small claims?
The full.
Okay.
Yeah, so essentially what I do, primarily responsible for, for City Potaski, ordinance enforcement, so misdemeanor tickets, civil infractions tickets, I handle those prosecutions. We do, what else? Just general guidance, anything that comes up, typically FOIA, OMA stuff, but.
Yeah, I just have a question.
Sure.
Folks, you can't hear, can you?
Pretty good.
You okay?
I can stay on the podium if you want.
Well, if you'd like, we don't want to grill you too.
It's fine.
Okay, just break the cameras. Okay, is that okay with the board?
Yes.
Thank you.
So, yeah, City Potaski, that's primarily what I'm responsible for. I mean, everything that comes up, I mean, it could be, you know, often it's FOIA, OMA issues that we address, but a hot topic right now that I seem to be spending a lot of time on is marijuana. I am involved with a lot of municipal litigation around marijuana licensing, so that takes, hasn't been approved in Potaski yet. It's been attempted a couple of times, but.
In the City of Potaski?
In the City of Potaski.
And they know it's to the north there?
Right, there's one north and south of town. I believe both are on tribal land, but we did just have a ballot initiative this past election cycle that made it to the ballot but was voted down, but that's the type of thing too under the Recreational Marijuana Act. I mean, the citizens of Tuscora Township could try to initiate an ordinance and that's a process that I'm familiar with, been through it two or three times, just approving, make sure it complies with election law, that's, but those are kind of, you know, one and done things. It's not something we deal with on a regular basis, but yeah.
So, yeah, we talked a lot on the board here the last several years about that. I'm going to defer to the other. I've got a list of questions that I don't want to just dominate everything. Jay, you have some questions?
Yeah, well, we can go around the table here, but do you have any conflicts of interest with any family, friends, business associates, governmental officials within the township?
No, I don't. The closest thing I think I come to is, I do have a client, I started representing him because he owns a hotel locally. He recently started a tourist bureau and I helped him just with the formation of that, but as I understand the way that visitor and tourism bureau, it's more dealing with on a state level. I don't see that it would come before the township board or anything like that. But no, I don't have any personal connections. I'm originally from southeast Texas, so I've got no family up here, nothing like that, so.
Okay, cool, very nice. In general, how would you handle township issues that would come before you? Would you be proactive or reactive? In other words, would you simply react to what we ask you to do or would you be proactive in terms of what you think we ought to be evaluating or what kind of risk scenarios we have in front of us?
I would, I mean, I do both. For the municipalities I represent now, I mean, a lot of times it is mostly playing defense and just whatever is sort of a hot issue at that moment. But that said, I mean, those come and go, so I do have some downtime where I'm able to look proactively. I just did this for the City of Potaski where they have a glaring gap in their code ordinances for short-term rentals. So, they were kind of trying to make it fit into some existing regulations, but you know, in the downtime, I said, hey, look, this is something we should proactively do now and I've put together an ordinance for them. So, to answer your question, it'd be both. I mean, first priority would be the hot issue, but then I could take a look, big picture and see if there are things we can do proactively to, you know, minimize issues down the road.
Another question would be, and this would be probably partly due to just me not being here much more than, you know, 60 days, but how would you interact with the board? Through a single voice of the board or with the board in its totality or is there an alternate way beyond that that I'm not even aware of?
Well, to some degree, that's up to you all. I guess my preference is to have one spokesperson. That's what I do with the cities I represent. Usually it's the city manager is kind of my person. He can, he or she can just sort of gauge the board, see what issues, what questions you want answered and it can all go through him. So, I don't have, you know, questions coming from five different angles, but it's really up to you guys. I mean, I can, you know, come here and address you all in closed session. It's really however you want to do it.
It would be a case-by-case thing? I didn't mean to interrupt you.
I would kind of like to have it be like, this is the rule, this is how we're doing it, so there's no confusion, but yeah, just however you guys decide you want to do it, that's how we'll do it.
I have actually two more questions, but one would be, again, maybe my shortcomings relative to my short time at a position here, but would your legal opinions be written and reference laws in precedent-setting cases or how do you communicate those to the board?
That's a good question. So, it's kind of the debate in our office too because Jim has been doing it a lot longer than I have and the way he does it is very succinct, just sort of paragraph narrative form, no citation of authorities. I don't like to do it that way and my thinking is really to, you know, if you're having me research something, it's a concern. We're, we want to do it right, we might do it wrong. I have all the authorities right there in front of me, so if it does result in litigation, there you go. I already have a roadmap, you know, more or less done. So, the way I would do it, unless you guys tell me you're tired of seeing all my case law citations, is I would cite everything. I would say, hey, look, I looked into this, here's the statute, here's a case interpreting that statute, here's my opinion. So, yeah, I would cite the authorities unless you guys say, I don't want to see that.
That's good, thank you. One last question. We happen to have a lot of angst, maybe that's the best word, relative to paving roads around here and we have a lot of opinions about what's the right thing to do, what's the fair thing to do, what's, what we shouldn't do. What's your, can you share with us your opinion or your experience with special assessment districts and how assessments are made as a result of the, once the district's set up, then what is the fair, equitable or what the law would require in terms of making payments to that district from the property owners?
Yeah, that's something that I've helped Jim Murray out with that before with the City of Potaski. It's not something I have direct experience with at the moment. I'd have to do a little bit of research. I can't sort of speak in the abstract as to how I would handle that, but the nice thing is, I mean, you know, I'm at the point now where, you know, a decade in, I've seen a lot of things over and over. There's some things I haven't seen, but the good thing is I know how to get those answers for you. I just don't have an answer as I sit there.
Make them up again now, so you may want to research. Anyways.
Thank you, Jay. Bobby, you have to move?
Yeah, I'd like to listen for a while.
Are you pretty available like when we have an emergency? You know, I mean, is it okay for, if we need you to go to only be on your cellphone? It could be any, because we never know 24/7?
Pretty much, yeah. I don't, I'm one of those people, I mean, it depends what day you ask me, but I generally, I enjoy what I do and I work kind of all the time. I mean, I was working until eight o'clock last night. I'm on our township fire department, so I'm not a very sound sleeper. I'm always waiting for that alarm to go off, so if you guys call me, I'll probably answer. They'll call you back pretty quick, so.
Bobby, do you have any questions?
I'm with Bobby.
You want to wait?
I asked a couple and I think I'm doing all right with what you guys are.
Have you had any experience like in writing general ordinances or anything like that?
Oh, yes.
Okay, I mean, other than, I know you're, it sounded kind of funny then. You said you've been on marijuana for the last few years.
Yeah, those, those ordinances, that's a different topic in and of itself. It's such a mess, I could talk to you guys for hours about.
Yeah, well, we're talking about general ordinances or, you know, like for our, if there's something we need for, through our police department or our parks or something, you know?
Absolutely, yeah. It's just some recent examples. Again, I just did short-term rental ordinances for Boyne City, for City Potaski. City Potaski Russell looking now at, there's a big issue with parking enforcement. A lot of people just, I think things have been falling through the cracks. There are people with tens of thousands of dollars of fines that have accumulated, so now we're looking at beefing up that ordinance scheme to allow us to immobilize and tow vehicles too, so that's a pretty big overhaul of the code ordinances that I've been doing as well. So, lots of experience, all different types of ordinances. In fact, the matter is, I mean, often we don't reinvent the wheel. We look at what other communities have done, we try to make it fit for our particular client, so it's, yeah, it's something, no matter the topic, I'll be able to put something together.
Yeah, we've never had to go to arbitration, anything like that with our police department. We have a police department with a union contract. Have you ever had to do any labor negotiations or any work on that?
Labor negotiations, no. We have, I think she's in the packet, Laura Dynan is sort of our employment specialist. She handles stuff like that typically. No, no direct experience dealing with the labor negotiations.
Jay, do you have any questions right off the top of your head?
I was just wondering, we're in a transition period. We're doing, I don't know if you're aware of it, it's called a program called Township of Excellence, so kind of we're overhauling some of our policies, procedures, looking at all our different departments and community commissions and trying to improve them or just figure all that out. And I was just wondering how much you would be available to come to meetings when we're talking about specific issues like a department or a specific policy or something like that?
I'm pretty available. The other municipalities I represent generally don't want me at every meeting. I mean, if there's something specific that we want to talk about. So, generally, what, night of the week are the meetings?
Not on Tuesdays, first Tuesday along, but we have special meetings all the time too, so I mean, we could work around your schedule as well if there was an issue, but we just need some legal advice moving forward. Sometimes on some of these different, we don't have a lot of ordinance, but we do have a lot of policies and procedures, so.
Yeah, and to the question earlier too, I mean, it's surprising to me how often I see, you know, municipalities who, I mean, Jesus and signs, and there's some policies just that aren't in place. Like, there's one, I won't mention their name, but they didn't have a record retention policy, ever. And that's, it became problematic because, you know, we all see the news and how contentious elections are these days and when an election takes place invariably we get FOIA requests looking for all these election records and there's some by statute we have to keep for a certain amount of time, but they can only be destroyed pursuant to a, an adopted record retention policy. Well, this particular municipality didn't have one, so technically they shouldn't have never destroyed anything. So, that's one of those things. I can help you with your existing policies and sort of bring them up to where they should be and then also looking at where there are some gaps that need to be filled in.
Okay, that would be good. We just passed, I don't even know how many, 10 chapters of health policies just last week, so we are moving forward as a little township. We didn't have a lot of those in place before, so we're trying to catch up now. So, I just wondered how much you would be available to that. Are you familiar with the Township of Excellence program?
I am not familiar, I know of it. I don't know much about its criteria and all, but no.
Well, it's recommended through the MTA and they give us a lot of templates and guidance on that and stuff, so that's what we're, we're also doing in the process of doing a $14 million sewer project.
Oh, okay.
So, you may need some help with the legalities of that. It hasn't gone out for bid yet. We've just established the special assessment districts for that. There's two, actually there's two districts, but they're divided. They're back here in the village area and we have an EPA grant. We, for one, we have USDA grants on the other side and it may get a little complicated as we move forward, so we may need your assistance on kind of reading through that.
Sure.
All right. A lot of things happening in this township.
I like to hear that.
That's good.
Has anybody else, any, I had a question that kind of dovetailed with Jay's. If you were to be hired, what do you see your transition for us in terms of your responsibility? What would you need from us in terms of, like, I mean, are you going to be, I'd like to see your code of ordinances. Are you just going to be, again, like, is it reactive or proactive? I mean, is there anything that you're going to say, okay, I'd be glad to, this is what I need to look at first, I need to see?
Well, I think I would, we would have a conversation about what your priorities are. I mean, I would start there. I mean, once we get past sort of putting out current fires and we can sort of look at a big picture, then I would transition to more to those sort of proactive things and looking at the code of ordinances, but yeah, I think that's, we would just get together and have a conversation and see where the priorities are and just go from there.
What brought you from southeast Texas to Michigan?
That was a long time ago. I kind of, I think I've lost my Texan street cred at this point because I moved here, my dad moved us here in 96. He was a, he was a fireman too and he, you know, was looking for that next step. He was a captain for years and years and he got a chief's job in Three Rivers, Michigan, so that's where, yeah. Wasn't heavy at the time, but I met my wife there, so it went all worked out, but.
Where in Texas?
Beaumont is where I grew up.
Okay.
Want me to start?
Yeah, sure.
So, you don't, right now you don't represent any townships?
Bay Township, but.
I'm sorry?
Bay Township, we do represent, but.
Where are they?
They are, yeah, I was with you, I'm not entirely sure. I think they're south of Potaski, between Charlevoix and Potaski.
Okay.
But I've been working at Plunkett for three years. I've done one project for them, so it doesn't do much work for them.
So, one of the things that we'll need on the $14 million sewer project is some work on ride of the waves. Did you want to explain that to them?
We'd have to have your opinion, your legal opinion on all of those. It's something that you'd be dealing with our road commission as well as USDA. They have a letter of conditions and a lot of that goes to the general counsel.
Yeah.
And so probably, you know, before you make a decision, I have you look at it.
Yeah, that's something Jim Murray and I both have experienced doing that, Boyne City and Potaski, so yeah, that's, we're familiar with that process.
Have you done any work on blight? We have a blight issue here.
Yes. Yeah, do we, do you guys have like a code enforcement person or is that done through the police department?
Police department.
Yeah, I have done that before. I guess this is a short answer. You guys don't have like any historic commission or historic districts or anything like that? Okay, because it gets a little complicated. I had that come up in Boyne City where there's a whole different set of regulations you have to deal with when you're talking about historic districts, but yeah, short answer is yes. We've done with, we've dealt with blight mitigation a lot.
Because it just seems that every time you have to take somebody to court, it just goes on and on and on.
Yeah, and that's, and that's, that's why, you know.
One year and one case.
Yeah, and they can make it do that. The party opposing it, I mean, it really depends how you do it. I mean, the civil infraction proceedings are pretty quick. I mean, there should just be one formal or informal hearing and you're able to get either a finding of responsibility or no responsibility.
That isn't the issue. It's once we levy the fine, they still don't clean it up or don't do what the court ordered and then they have to.
Well, there's a statute that empowers you to do it yourself and charge them the expense of mitigating.
Yeah, we ended up doing it.
Yeah, so, yeah, that's what we usually resort to because you're right. I mean, at a certain point, you know, you got your, your finding of responsibility, you got the piece of paper. It's not going to fix the trash in the front yard or the, you know, the windows that are broken, but.
So, we have a new blight ordinance that we beefed up quite a bit and it basically says that, you know, you can charge them by the day if they don't comply, but in a lot of cases, we're being told by our council that, and the police chief, well, the judge will just set all that aside.
Depends on the judge. Several of them certainly do do that. I did have, not that it does us much good here, but the district judge and she's in Charlevoix and the county, but she held this person to the fire because, their feet to the fire because they were pretty blatant about failing to adhere to the court's order and they were charged every single day. It was, I think, $14,000 worth of fines. So, it depends on the judge. I mean, you don't know unless you ask and I would continually ask and make that judge every single time, you know, say on the record that you're just going to excuse these ongoing violations, but yeah. No, I get that frustration.
So, you get to know us if we select you. Will you be available to come for the first couple, three meetings? First Tuesday?
Yeah, I, yeah, I'd have to look at my calendar. I mean, I.
The best way to get to know us is to be here.
Sure.
For two or three meetings.
Yeah, I mean, the only problem I would have in the, in the short term is, I mean, my calendar, I usually book two and a half months, some things in advance, so it just depends. I mean, Tuesdays generally I keep pretty open, so I don't think that would be a problem.
We do it at night.
Yeah, and that shouldn't be a problem. I do occasionally have to travel. I have cases in the U.P. as well, but yeah, should be.
So, when somebody communicates with you, do you answer all the legislative body or do you just go through one person? Our current attorney counsel, correct me if I'm wrong, generally, like if Mike asks a question, he'll put us all on the CC line. Are you willing to do that?
I have no problem with that. If that's how you guys want it done, because I do have occasionally questions will be asked about perceived conflicts of interest or something like, something that they don't necessarily want to air to the entire body, so there may be occasions where someone reaches out to me directly and says, hey, just so you know, I have a question about this person specifically. So, there may be instances where I have direct conversations if that's what you want me to do. Otherwise, I'll just say, no, you need to run through.
And then, of course, as you know, it's how you ask the question. Leading questions are easy. So, I mean, do you like repeat the question? When you're responding to us, do you repeat the question? I think what you're asking is?
I will do that and sometimes they will even copy paste the question from the email because I want to make sure that, you know, like, hey, this is the question you asked, but that said, like you said, it does matter how you ask the question. So, if I think, okay, I can extrapolate that a little bit and take it down a digression, like, you may also want to think about this and this is something else to be aware of. So, I don't necessarily just look at it and say, this is the question you asked, I'm only going to answer this. If there's something bigger you need to be aware of and some other considerations, I'll take you there, but yeah, I will, I'll answer the question that I'm asked and make sure we're on the same page before I jump into analysis.
One thing that, if you were selected, that I would ask the board to get you on immediately. We have a, we have an elected parks commission. It's, parks commissions in the state of Michigan these days are a rarity, left over from the, from an 1890s law. So, I think there's less than 22 left in the entire state and we're one of those and that's going to take, you know, a lot of digging because to this day, I really don't know where the limits are. For example, I know that we had a Saturday session one time and we had a discussion about liability. So, if the parks commission has their own parks employees, I'm not asking you for a pigeon, I'm just getting used to the background. If the, if the parks commission has their own employees and one of those employees gets the township in trouble, right, we're ultimately responsible. And then we ask, okay, if they're, if, if they belong to the parks commission, but we're still responsible, can we fire that person? I think in an extreme case, I think the question, the answer was, well, yes, we could, but we didn't really flush it out, find it out. For example, I'm very concerned about sexual harassment, policies, due process for grievances, but you know, right now, our parks commission employees don't even have a job description. So, we really need to know where our boundaries are. I don't think anybody here knows what our boundaries are with them. I don't think they know either. And if you do, please tell me if you know the boundaries, folks.
Well, one, one nice thing that you'll get with me too is, you know, I really enjoy this type of, you know, coming to meetings, just talking big picture, doing legal research and just sort of guiding municipalities, but I do spend a lot of my time litigating too. So, what that means for you is like, just using that hypothetical of, I'll just add a little bit to your hypothetical, that parks employee got in a car accident or something, you know, so what I would say to you in that situation, if litigation seemed imminent, at that point, I would probably say, you know, let's look, do we have policies and procedures in place? Did this person violate them? Are they subject to any collective bargaining agreement or any sort of contract? But then also I would say, if litigation is forthcoming, I would maybe wait because, you know, just the way that that would play out in litigation, if there's an accident, the person was fired, it's almost a tacit admission of you did something wrong or he did something wrong. So, that's something to keep in mind too is that I'm not only looking at the strategy of the question you're asking me and I'm looking big picture, like, okay, what could this look like down the road if we don't give someone the due process for a grievance procedure or something like that, so.
So, with our parks commission, we have the power of the purse, right? So, I mean, we can, you know, if we had to, I guess we could force these policies on them somehow using the power of the purse, but I'm just concerned about like hiring, for example. We have a hiring policy and as you know, you can get into trouble with, you know, equal opportunity issues. You got to be really, really careful. And, you know, if we were to hire someone with no policy at all, that's leaving us wide open in my view. Do you ever, or your firm ever, send out notices to clients on, proactively, without even being asked, when there's a major change in a law?
All the time.
I'm specifically talking about the new accrued sick leave. Are you familiar with that?
I'm not.
It kicks in February 19th.
Yeah, that's something I can guarantee Laura Dynan is familiar with, but to your question, we send out what we call rapid reports all the time. Anytime there's a big case that comes down from the Court of Appeals, a published opinion or something from the Supreme Court, or this new legislation that impacts our municipal clients, we're usually on top of that and everyone. You guys get it. We do a lot of work through the Michigan Municipal League. All those members who are on our listserv get it, so.
So, just to give you a little background here, our library has, you know, their own millage. They do their own thing, you know, we're good at what they do, and they have their own downstate lawyer and they had a meeting yesterday and their lawyer had sent them already the impact of this new law that's going to, from 2018 actually, it's 830, section 833 about overtime. Remember when they passed the overtime? I'm sorry, the minimum wage increase. It's all part of that law. So, now unless the Supreme Court grants another stay, it kicks in the 19th of February. That's going to require us to provide paid sick leave regardless of whether they're regular, part-time, even seasonal. So, what I'm getting at is we would have to change our employee handbook to reflect those changes and to me, just from what I saw up on the screen that the library was presenting yesterday, it looks pretty complicated. You know, if you have this many employees, you're supposed to give them this many hours. If you have this many employees, you're supposed to do this and there's an accrual system, I'm like.
Yeah, well, and that's kind of, I mean, that's our job. We're going to try to make it make sense to you, but it's not something that is currently on my radar because again, Laura, for like, I also represent the Health Department, Northwest Michigan, for all the employment stuff goes to Laura. Laura, that's what she does day in, day out, so.
Okay, so if we have an employee handbook and we know that this law is there, would we just send you our handbook and say, look, please recommend language to amend this to cover the policy on the new? this to cover the policy on the new accrual of sick leave requirements? Or would we have to write the draft and say-
Oh, no. No, we would, we would do a draft. I mean, I have had it, look, I've had people before take stabs at ordinances. You know, it's not all that difficult for someone. We have code enforcement people specifically in the city of Petoskey, in Boyne City. So those people occasionally will do their own homework and find something on Google and say, hey, here's my, what I think it should look like. I don't take that as gospel. I'm just like, I, if there's something that needs to be changed, I change it. But I just say that to say, if you guys had something in mind that you wanted to see, sure, you could take a draft at it, and I would take a look. But generally, I would prefer to just draft it from scratch.
Yeah, please. Okay. The only other comment I have is on your fee structure. Are you considered an associate in that structure?
Yes.
Okay. Because even then, it's higher than all the other applicants. Is that something you're willing to talk about?
Well, I looked at the other proposal. I think they're all consistent at $200 an hour, I think. I mean, I know Sonny received-
You're the highest.
What's that?
You're the highest.
Am I? Yeah, it's, you know, I, at best, I think what I could probably do is get the, and this is one of the, sort of downsides of, a lot of upsides of working at a big firm, but one of the downsides is the bureaucracy I have to deal with, so I think-
Well, I can understand if you got to send it down-
Yeah, yeah, I think the best I could do though is get like a straight across the board 200 and nothing special for partners, but 200 is pretty consistent. I mean, that's on the low end. Like, my private pay clients are usually 250 to 300 an hour, so even as an associate. It's, the municipalities, we generally, and it's largely because I just like doing the work, honestly. But that's where all of our municipal clients are, is right in that, that area.
Yeah, I understand. I mean, I pay three 50 an hour.
Are you, are you experiencing appellate court at home? Do you have to do appellate?
So I've done appellate. So it depends on, like, the actual Michigan Court of Appeals, we have a specific appellate department. So when something escalates to that point, I send it off. We have one of the best appellate attorneys in the state, in my opinion, Mary Maseron. She's awesome. So we send it all, that stuff in the Court of Appeals goes to them. But what could happen for us, like zoning issues, code enforcement issues, where they start, you know, at the local level, like a Z.B.A. issue or something like that, you know, some sort of local issue that has then escalated, it's appealed to the Circuit Court. So that's technically the Court of Appeals. I do represent my municipalities in the Circuit Court for appeals. So I think I should list it in the, in our packet, I think it was Friends, Friends versus City of Petoskey. So that started at the Z.B.A. I represented them in front of the Circuit Court, got the decision affirmed, then went up to the Michigan Court of Appeals where I passed it on to our appellate department because they're just more familiar with the appellate rules. I'm more familiar with the, just the civil, rules of civil procedure, the court rules and the trial courts, so.
I do have a question now. As you're talking, you're going to be our go-to guy, is how it would work. So if you needed, like, if we're looking at employee handbook, you'll bring in Laura, if you need, you'll, you bring in those people as you need them, and we're still going to be talking to you always?
Exactly. I'm always going to be your point person, and sometimes it's going to be, even if it's not like a specialized thing, like employment, I'm giving it to Laura. If it's like, Matt, we got this emergency, we need an answer in the next 24, 48 hours. I have this all the time, unfortunately, because sometimes it's not that easy for me personally to respond in 24, 48 hours.
Right.
So we've got, I think, 100 or so attorneys in our firm, all of which are very capable. So like, I may give it to an associate, a younger associate, and say, hey, help me out with this. I always review their work. It's not like you just get, I'm just, here you go, here's what they said. I'll look at it, and, but, yeah, you, you won't have to worry about that. I'll deal with the staffing. I'm your point person.
Okay. So everything we do goes through you?
Yeah.
How many folks have you got in Petoskey? Just you?
No, no, in Petoskey, there's one, two, three, four, five of us.
Attorneys?
Yes.
And how much staff?
Four support staff.
Okay. Like what, legal assistants?
Legal assistants and paralegals, I think. Maybe it breaks down.
Will that save us some money?
Oh, yeah. And, and I do that to the extent I'm able to. I mean, there's certain things I trust-
Like parks?
What's that?
When you have to dig in on this parks thing?
Yeah, there's certain things that I will, you know, I'll delegate to a paralegal to help me out with that stuff. I have one, actually, my assistant is also a paralegal, and she's awesome. She actually lives here too, in this area. But she's a, I trust her to do a lot of stuff. So to the extent possible, yes, I try to give that to someone who you pay a lower hourly rate to, to help out, yeah.
I don't have any more questions. Jay, do you have any more?
I hope you did.
Robert, do you have any more? Jay?
I'm good.
Bobby?
Can't do it. I'd just like to thank you. Where's, where's your office, where's it located?
It's in a familiar yard, it's downtown Petoskey. It's right across the street from the Perry.
I know that place, yeah. Yeah, you do, don't you?
You're at the old train station?
No, across the street the other way. It's, it's a bank building.
By the Tippamet watershed?
Yes, we're right next to it, right?
Yep, okay.
Yeah, it's not too bad to drive.
Do you do any work for Tippamet?
I'm sorry?
Do you do any work for Tippamet?
No, no. No, no, there's actually one attorney in our office who likes to tease them by putting certain signs that don't, don't align with their philosophical view, like right in the window where they can see it. But he hasn't done that in a little while.
Matt, I'd like to thank you for, for coming over here.
Yeah, happy to do.
And be in contact with you one way or the other.
Okay. So you guys have like a timeframe when you're expecting to make a decision?
We'll, we'll talk about that after terms of, if we're going to schedule another meeting, we'll take care of it at regular meetings.
Okay.
Yeah. Our next meeting is February 7th, I believe.
Seventeenth.
I mean, I, I would think we would have something by then, right?
Thanks a lot, Matt.
Yep, I'll wait to hear from you guys. Appreciate it.
Thanks for coming, and glad you were able to make it before the snow falls.
I know. Sounds like we're going to get it pretty bad.
Yeah, it just started a little bit when I came in.
Yeah, and I had, Google took me an interesting route too. It was mostly-
You went to the fire, fire hall first?
Well, yeah, so it took me from downtown Petoskey, so I went like all back roads, loose gravel, icy.
Oh, no, just stay on 68, we'll answer.
That's the way I usually come.
Yeah, that's, that's the easiest way.
I'm sure it's a nice drive in the summers, not that nice in the-
Thanks again.
Thanks, guys.
Take care. We'll see you.
Yep.
Can we address these two?
Yes.
The land division request of any new property company, company. Did anybody get a chance to look at that split? And have, do you have any questions?
Yeah. Why do they want it?
Because they have a gas pump there. There's a gas pump there. They want to split that off as a, someone else-
Is this the beer district?
Yes, yes.
So they have a gas pump and they want to split it off? Why?
I think somebody else is going to take control of it. There's, there's a gas pump on the very end. If you drive, you ever seen it? If you drive down, okay, if you're driving down 68 and their property, it would be in the far east end. If you look down, there's a, a gas pump there, and it's one of those commercial gas pumps. I can't remember the name of the-
Are we going to get a new gas station in town?
No, it's, no, it's just, it's a commercial gas station. You buy a car there, you can, a lot of it's for trucks.
It's fleet stuff.
Fleet, yeah, fleet stuff.
Oh, like the lumber people?
I don't know if they use, I don't know who uses it. I know that it's, you know, you go up there and it's a-
Okay, so it's not owned by your, on, it's owned by Alpine Oil, is that it?
No, it's on their, I don't know who owns it. It's on, in your property company is the people, that, that's where the yard distributing property is. So it's, it's on there.
But Clayton says this is okay, right?
Yeah, if, it's, we have the latitude to, to approve it, seven to one. The ratio is four to one. 400 by 100 feet is, is the land division. But the township has the latitude to approve it. So then I pass that statute as well.
Is this, is this any precedence, or does this? Is this unusual? I mean, is it going to bite us later?
Not that I can, just if somebody else wants to do it, you know.
I, I think it's case, I mean, we've always handled these case by case. If it affects surrounding property owners in a negative way, we wouldn't do it. But where it's at, I mean, I don't, I can't, I couldn't think of a negative effect. And I asked a couple of them.
Well, that's a good point. Who borders that?
That, it's now, it's the guys building the, the property that Sue just sold. That is on the corner of Commerce Park. Thank you very much. It's kind of Commerce Park, and then up here on, it'll be here on Distributing, and then-
They just sold what?
This, it's right here.
So it's going to be that?
At the corner. It's, Tom and Sue Fisher owned this. They just sold that. They're going to be building high-end, I don't know what called-
Man caves.
Man caves.
Because what they are.
High-end man caves. They're, they're like, what was it, you mentioned, do you remember?
Pollard.
Well, they're, they're, they're like the plumbing-
They're zoned for that?
Yeah.
I thought we were zoned industrial.
Yeah, well, buildings on it.
But it's zoned industrial, right?
Yeah, like industrial.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
You need to see it, or you-
No.
Jay, do you-
Thank you.
You're going to make a motion. Thank you, sir. Is there a motion?
I would make the motion to accept the, approve the split.
Is there support?
No.
I will support it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
A question for you.
Yes.
Since you brought that up, man caves, are, is that, is that going to require sewer open?
Yes, more REUs.
Lots of it, I think.
Yeah, I know. We got to get to a point where we say, okay, like they did Mackinac Island a few years ago, no more growth until we expand the plant.
Do you have a estimate?
Uh, do you remember his plan?
I, I don't know.
Just, there are, just a toilet and a sink in the, in the, in the thing.
So what is it at? Is it going to be one?
Forty?
No, that, he is, I think his original plan was three buildings, was it?
I can't think of the picture.
I don't, I don't, I don't have it. I, I know where you can get it from Billy Enzey having sale.
Well, I guess what I'm asking is, is it like, going to be 10 REUs or 20 REUs?
No, I would guess, I would guess it's .5. It would be like, almost like an apartment .5. So it'd be like, one RU per two units. So if they have eight units, it'd be four, four REUs.
Unless they subdivide it. And if they subdivide it, then it's one, right?
Can't subdivide it.
Oh, you can't?
No, you can't split those.
I'm sorry.
You can't split it.
Hi, Joe.
How are you?
Good.
Good.
Great.
So how many total REUs do you have?
Don't know. We got to know, I can't remember how many, was it eight?
Just take a stab.
Eight or 10.
Eight or 10, like, yeah, four, five.
Really?
Yeah. And they're, I mean, they're nice. They're, they're-
So that'd be 20 units?
I thought there were 20. I thought the way it was designed, but I did all the math with them, but that was a really long time.
So, so just, so if you know, that 1.84 million we got, and that surge tank that he's designing, that'll really help us then.
Yeah. Oh, yeah.
It, it, even though it's only supposed to affect Phase 1, it's definitely going to help us with stuff like this. Because if you sell the property on the other side of the road-
Right.
-with another 10 REUs, or 20.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, it's a good question. Do we want to handle the Awaken real quick?
Before we leave that, do you think I ought to let the engineer know about this?
Yeah, I think we should stay in touch with him about, because there's so many things that are teed up right now, expansion, I don't-
So-
He hasn't pulled a permit or anything?
No, there's been no permit.
Yeah, I know, but, you know, he's in the final design phase, and he's going to present Phase 2. Maybe it doesn't affect anything, but maybe I ought to tell him that, you know, we could go as high as 40 more REUs?
Correct. When you think about what's down here and what's happening.
Okay.
Okay. I need to make a motion to, and I don't really know how to say this, in reference to the November 19th, 2022 minutes, item number five, we listed Terry Witolski as a signer on the Awaken account. My motion is that Terry Witolski is also known as Teresa Marie Witolski. That needs to be reflected in minutes because they couldn't make the association between Terry and Teresa. So if that, that's my motion that we-
How do you spell Theresa?
I've got it right here for you.
There's different ways to spell Theresa.
I'll second the motion.
Okay.
Second. Any more discussion?
Discussion?
Discussion. Okay, no discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Yeah.
Thank you for being here, Mr. McArthur. This is Tim McArthur, longtime Shaboy tonight, and he's agreed to come up and speak to us and answer a few questions. You can sit right there or take the podium, whatever you'd like to do.
I'll take the podium because then I'm standing up to address you.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate your coming today, and I, I guess I, I have to say, Jay, I would like to start with your question, because that was a great question to start out with.
And it's Tim, is that correct?
It's Tim McArthur, right.
Now, it's Scottish, not Irish, right? Is it M.A.C.?
Yeah.
So is that Scottish or Irish?
Well, it's Scottish.
That's what I thought.
But I have Irish on my, on my-
Now, I'm getting really personal. Don't reflect that in the minutes, okay?
Oh, my wife would like to know.
So Scottish and Irish, let's put it that way.
Well, Tim, do you have any conflicts of interest that we should know about relative to family, friends, business associates, or government officials in, you know, Tuscarawas Township?
No. Before I filled out the request for proposal, I looked at that. I don't have any conflicts that I can identify to the board.
Okay. And then this is a question I'll ask you because we're almost the same age, I'm sure. But how, how long do you think you'll still be in practice? You know, what's your plans, I guess, as far as your practice goes for the years?
Well, yeah, I, I don't have any plans to retire anytime soon. However, the State Bar of Michigan does require attorneys to have a succession plan. So we might involuntarily retire walking out the door here today, or bolt of lightning might come out of the sky or something like that. So I do have a, a plan for a local attorney to have access to all of my files and to be able to take those files over in the event of an emergency or death or whatever. And quite frankly, I have been looking around, and I've talked to a couple of younger attorneys that may actually be interested in coming into the practice. I don't anticipate that that would happen within the next three to six months, but sometime after that, that's a possibility.
Okay, very good. What are your, what is, how would, how would you deal with issues from our township in a reactive manner or a proactive manner or both? And by that, I mean reactive would be waiting for us to ask for help, proactive would be keeping us out of trouble?
Well, I guess it depends on, on the issue that comes up. A lot of issues that come up are reactive in nature because, for example, you may get a FOIA request. That's a reactive request. It's something that somebody sends a request, I want these documents. Question is, you know, why do you want the documents and what do you need for your request and so on? So it's something you've got to respond to. So that's reactive by definition. But there are times when you, I've been at enough township meetings over the years to, to see and to realize that there are certain times where you can look down the road from January to February, and you can see that something that may be done in January will lead to a request in February, or will lead to something that needs to be done in February. And so if there's something that's obvious, then I believe the board has to be advised of that. If you take action A, action Z will follow. So it's a difficult question to answer, but I think you need someone that, you know, if you ask the question, if we do this, what do you anticipate could happen? I think that's perhaps a proactive situation where you're trying to answer and prognosticate into the future as to what's going to happen.
Yeah, thank you. As far as your relationship with the board, does, what are your recommendations in terms of, would you like to deal with a single voice on the board, you know, a person, a contact? Or would you like to interact with the total board? Obviously, if it was a single voice, it had to be somebody that the board supports and nominates, so.
Yeah, I, I think that it makes sense from a financial standpoint, as well as from a standpoint of, of keeping things in, in some semblance of order to have one contact person with the township attorney. But having said that, you know, there are times when there may be people on the board that have questions about an, an issue, and they need to speak to the township attorney themselves. I don't think anybody, I mean, I guess that really is a board policy more so than a, than a law office policy. If you say, we have one individual that's going to interact with you, and I actually have municipal clients that are set up both ways, you know, where in some townships, I only really interact with the supervisor. In other townships, I really only interact with the clerk. And in several townships, it's whoever calls my phone, I will answer the phone. And, you know, it may be that something got assigned to the treasurer, hey- may be that something got assigned to the treasurer, hey, call Tim McArthur and ask him this, thus or so, you know? And so as long as I know that that's authorized by the board, I would react in that manner.
Next question is, how will your legal opinions be written? Do you, do you reference laws, statutes, precedent-setting cases, or do you just offer an opinion, I guess?
No, if it's, if it's a situation where there's a law that's implicated, I try to give you a legal opinion that would be similar to what a judge would write for you, you know? And I would cite the statute, and provide you with copies of the statute, so you can read the statute yourself, and you can see exactly what it is I'm saying and why I'm saying it. So typically, if it's an, you know, if it's an opinion letter based, that has to be based on, you know, a statutory issue, then it's gonna be cited just like a court of appeals brief or a brief to the trial court.
Fair enough, good. And then, we get involved in a lot of special assessment districts, at least as it relates to our roads. Do you have any, can you offer us any kind of insight in terms of how you would handle a special assessment district, in terms of how we come up with the actual assessments, the financial assessments to our property owners for those? Is there a playbook? Is there a law statute? Is there?
I still don't understand the rules.
How would you do that, is my question?
Okay, well, I guess it depends on the statute that you're acting under, but the most common statute is Public Act 188 of 1954. That's the general special assessment statute. And with the general special assessment statute, you can start a special assessment district either by petition from the individuals that want the improvement done. If you have a petition, you have to have 50.1% of the people sign that petition, asking for the improvement to be done. If you, the second way you can start that special assessment district is by board resolution. However, if you start the special assessment process by board resolution, then a 20% of the, of the area that is affected by the special assessment district can stop that special assessment district in its tracks. And some special assessment districts are based on front footage, and some are based on square footage of the improvement that is to be made. So, for example, road improvements typically are based on front footage. So if you start a special assessment by resolution rather than through petition, then you get, you can have 20% of the affected front footage, sign a petition and stop the whole thing, a contrary petition and stop the whole thing in its tracks. As far as how you assess, typically, you have to assess based on benefit to the property that is being assessed. And I have seen assessments, and I have done assessments where it's done simply on a per-lot basis, it's done on a per-ownership basis, where I own three lots, but I only get one assessment, or it's done on a front-footage basis or a square-footage basis, which can tend to be a bit of a nightmare for your assessor to sit down and calculate that all out. But, you know, that probably is the most equitable way of doing it. So if I've got 150 feet and somebody else has got 100 feet, I pay more in my assessment than he or she pays in their assessment. But it, you know, can be argued that if you have a 100-foot lot and 150-foot lot, you still have a lot. You still have a house, and you still only have one benefit for that lot. So, you know, I've literally done, I mean, I've done scores of special assessments over the years, and typically, it's, it's either the front-footage percentage or square-footage percentage, or it's done simply, if you want a simple special assessment, you just do it by lot. Everybody's got a benefit, and every lot gets a benefit. If the lots are combined, you may have to sit down and, you know, take a look at that to see if you've got two benefits there, or you've only, if you've got one building lot, or one building site, but it's three lots, you probably only have one benefit to that site, for a paved road.
What if there's no benefit?
Well, there's always a benefit, typically. I mean, even if you have an unimproved piece of property, okay? If it's a buildable piece of property, you arguably have a benefit. Now, if you have a piece of property that's not buildable, you know, it's a swale, or a swamp, or something like that, it could never be built on, then arguably, there wouldn't be a benefit to it.
We actually had that case, a couple of those in our sewer district, right?
Yeah, so, I mean, in those situations, you've gotta take a look at the individual lots and see what, you know, is there a benefit being conferred here? Or is there, you know, if it can't be built on and it can't be filled, you know, you could argue, there's no benefit to me to pay this special assessment.
So to summarize, it could, in all situations, it's, there's a, the context of the situation really depends or creates the situation where you, how you mediate that into assessments.
Yes, and if it's a special assessment where you have individuals that are coming to the board saying, we have a road that we want a special assessment done for to pave it, or to improve it, or upgrade it, or whatever, a lot of times, it's best to listen to what they have to say. How do you propose to, you know, spread the special assessment and let them make a proposal? So.
Very, very good.
I've never understood the back lot ratios on.
Yeah, I mean, that gets into, again, you know, a lot of times, you give a full special assessment if you're right on the paved road, but if you've got a connecting road that goes to the paved road, you get a 50% assessment or whatever.
Is there a rule of thumb?
No, it's more or less, you're, you're sort of pulling it out of thin air and making the best guess you can, you know? Because obviously, you know, if I have a lot that's on a paved road, I've got a benefit because I'm driving right into my garage from the paved road. If I've gotta drive a quarter of a mile over a gravel road to get to the paved road, then my car's got wear and tear from my lot to the paved road. But if that paved road now provides me with a road to a highway that I didn't have before the special assessment was put in, I'm still getting a benefit of it, so.
Can I ask a question, kind of going along with that?
Yeah, please.
So it sounds like, based on your experience, you, if you were selected to be our attorney, you would be able to guide us what our legal exposure is, I think is kind of what Jay's getting at, by how we assess it, if we assess it, how we establish these things going forward?
Yeah, yeah.
Experience with.
I mean, I've done, I think for a small township, your neighbor to the south, Nunca Township, has probably done more special assessment districts than just about any other smaller township within the county of Sheboygan. And we've done special assessment, I've been their attorney for years, and we've done special assessments down there for reconstruction of the dam, for reconstruction, or for handling aquatic weeds, milfoil, et cetera, et cetera, in Wildwood Lake, to pave multiple, multiple roads down there. And with special assessment districts, you can prioritize private roads also. And there are different statutes dealing with private roads. You can also do that under Public Act 188, but there are other statutes that deal with private road improvements and so on. So you got, first of all, you gotta figure out what it is you're doing, and then find the correct statute. Public Act 188's sort of the catch-all. You can do most things under Public Act 188. And that primarily has the procedure in it, the two hearings, the hearing of necessity, the hearing on the, on the roll, the publication requirements, the notice requirements, all of that's contained in that one public act. And then if you read the other special assessment statutes, most of those statutes all say, follow the same procedure as is in Public Act 188. So they don't have separate procedures for all of these other statutes. They almost all fall under the same procedure as Public Act 188.
Just to get back on a different track here, Tim, how accessible are you in terms of, I mean, you give your cellphone out, or do you go to your office and you get back to us and you get the message?
I typically will give my cellphone out to the contact person, and my office is staffed generally nine to five, Monday through Friday. We have around-the-clock email at the office, and that's monitored when, obviously, when the office is open, it's monitored. I don't, I'm not monitoring my office email on Saturdays and Sundays, to be honest with you. So, although, I got an email from you, I believe, on Sunday, and I returned an email Sunday.
There was a language in that, but you were gonna can me or something.
Yeah, yeah. I'm not real good at spell check.
It was.
Full disclosure.
Yeah. I've read your work thing, because tax tribunal, I know you've had a lot of experience at tax tribunal.
Yeah, we've had, and that mainly came out of Mackinac Township.
With our former assessor?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah. Mackinac Township, we had a lot of litigation out of Mackinac Township. Went to the Supreme Court on that one case that I cited.
Superior, Superior.
Superior Hotels, yeah, yeah. And that was an interesting case, but Mackinac, for a long time, there had a lot of, a lot of litigation, so.
So you'd have more than, more than that, how many appellate, have you had a lot of appellate experience as well?
Four at the tax tribunal.
Yeah, tax tribunal.
Well, altogether, I would say, we had two cases involving the courtyards up there. The Superior Hotels case, I would say about eight altogether, so.
Have you had experience with, because we have a union police force here, you have had to do labor negotiations for mediation?
No, I haven't. Years ago, when I was Sheboygan County prosecutor, I worked with their labor attorney in negotiating, assisting, he negotiated the contract with the sheriff's department at that time, but I was involved in the process. So I do have some experience with that, but to say that I sat down and negotiated a union contract, no.
Somebody asked another question earlier about, well, how many people, are you just the only attorney in your office?
I am at this point, yes.
You said, you said three to six months, that might.
That may very well change, yeah.
Janet, any questions?
Yeah, we're in the process of doing a large sewer expansion, 14 million dollar project. We're doing some grants from the EPA, USDA, depending on which phase it's in, and it's a little complicated.
Go on.
Yeah, and so, could you help us through that process? Because, I mean, there's a lot of legalities. We've already applied, and the one phase is supposed to go out, to bid in March, I think?
March or April.
Yeah. And so, you know, we're moving forward, and so I want to know if you can help us with some of that, if anything can help.
Do you have a consultant that's doing the grant writing for you, or?
We're beyond that stage.
We have the letter conditions from USDA.
All right, so you're beyond, okay.
Yeah, you'll need to address, like if.
In fact, we went, we went to the Congress and got a congressional earmark, that's through the EPA.
All right.
And they give very few of those out, so it's a very difficult, different process of what we've ever done before. And then, of course, we have the USDA, and we have a state grant as well that we have to work through.
USDA requires us to have a legal agreement, right, Mike?
Yeah, for, like, right-ofways and.
So you'd have to do, there would be a lot of right-ofway work. Some of it's been done. I think Phase One has been done, maybe.
Look at the letter conditions, I'm not sure.
Yeah, so there's just a lot of things that's coming up, up and coming. And also, the, we are experiencing a little bit of transition in our township. We're doing the Township of Excellence program, I'm doing, are you aware of that?
I am aware of that.
Good.
Yes.
So we just passed 10 chapters this last week.
Okay.
And so we have them there. Now it's the implementing stage, right? And so it's a learning curve for all our departments, even ourselves, and stuff, and making sure we get that through. So I just wanted to know if you could maybe help us with that, if there's some questions. We pretty much had it all vetted by the attorneys before you as already, and the financial chapter was vetted by our auditor. So everything's been up to par, as far as we know, but there's always something, you know? It's just policies and procedures, so things come up, you know?
Right.
So I want to make sure you're aware of the Township of Excellence program, could help us with that.
Well, I think I can help you with that. I am aware of that program. I've done some research into that. I know what it's all about. I mean, I, from a general standpoint, not from a specific standpoint. But the, the other thing with the, I was involved with the, I mean, you're, you're one of only two townships within the county that have a sewer project, okay? Inverness Township is the other township that actually has a sewer project. If you exclude Mackinac, the Township of Mackinac does have sewer that runs into it, but that's through a 425 agreement with the village of Mackinac City. So they have not done their own project. But in terms of your, your own standalone projects, Inverness and Tuscarora have, you know, have their own projects. And Inverness did not obtain grant money, but they did obtain funding through what was the Farmers Home Administration. And there was a lot of, in terms of the easement issues and all of the requirements that you're referring to, those are generally all required also if you're just simply borrowing the money and not receiving grant proceeds too. So I am familiar with, you know, the necessity to have those easements in place and have them done correctly, you know? Usually, on something like that, what you want to do, or you may want to consider doing is, you know, working with a title company consultant, you know, to make sure that, that the easements are, that we're obtaining, that are being obtained, are being obtained for the areas that you need the easements, you know, and that you have everyone who's entitled signing off on those easements. So if you have John Smith and Martha Smith on a, maybe on a tax bill, but John and Martha may have put their son or their daughter's name on that property, and you need an easement from them, you have to make sure that you've got John and Martha and son and daughter to make a valid easement, so.
How many townships do you represent in the county?
Well, you would think that I would know that off the top of my head. I can tell you, I do not represent Walker Township, except on occasional matters. I do not represent Ellis Township, except, again, they call me on occasional matters. I do not represent Mullet Township at this point. And I think those are the three townships that I don't represent.
Because one of the questions was, earlier, people wanted, would you be available to come to some meetings, but you are probably being called to a lot of meetings.
Well, yeah, and that was one of the things in the proposal that I submitted. I do have, your meeting night is the most popular meeting night of the month for all of these townships, so. I do have, I mean, there are other townships such as Inverness and Benton, and your township, and there's just a lot of townships that have their meetings, you know, on that Tuesday night. So basically, what I tell people is, if you, you know, if you have an issue and you need me there, I'll make arrangements to be there, you know? But I do need to, you know, let other townships know that, you know, that I, if I have a commitment, for example, at Inverness, I may have to go to their meeting if they call me first. So that's how I've always done it.
So we may have to schedule, like, a special meeting around your schedule or something?
Yeah, well, I mean, I've always sort of done first come, first serve on those meetings, you know? Just to be honest with you, I don't want to promise you something that I can't deliver. So, you know, the bottom line is that, you know, somebody calls me today for a meeting in February, it goes in my schedule, you know? Somebody calls me three days before the meeting in February, and I've already got it committed, I'm. I'm not going to be able to make that. But a special meeting, yes, we would make arrangements to be at a special meeting.
Whoever we decide on, this is just me speaking, I'd really like that person here for our first two or three meetings, just so you can see what's going on and get to know us.
Mm-hmm.
Get the dynamics of what's going on.
Any more questions?
Yeah, I got, blight, do you do any blight? We have a blight problem there.
Yeah. I laughed because blight is, I mean, it's been a problem for years and years in the county. And I have drafted, before the most recent situation that has arisen whereby the County Sheriff's Department has indicated that they're going to enforce blight ordinances drafted by townships, of course, your case would be separate because you have your own police department, but previously, I had drafted blight ordinances, I believe, for, I think, four different townships. And those blight ordinances were enforced sporadically. The problem with blight is that you have to have a good definition of blight, number one. Number two, if you're going to start to enforce blight, you know, as we said before, proactively, you've got to enforce it uniformly, too. So, you can't pick and choose, you know, Tim McArthur's got blight in his yard, but we're not going to enforce it because he's a nice guy, but Joe Smith that lives next to Tim McArthur's got blight in his yard, and we're going to enforce it because he's not a nice guy, you know. So, it's got to be uniform, you know, enforcement.
Yeah, we have a new blight ordinance that has been strengthened significantly.
Okay.
And our problem right now is, you know, not, we have uniform enforcement, our police are great. The problem comes when, after we've issued the citation, that's where the hard work starts.
Correct.
And it just takes, it's just taking too long.
Mm-hmm.
You know, so in other words, they pay the fine and still won't clean it up.
Right.
You know, in one case, it took us a year.
Well, here's the problem with blight. If you have written your ordinance as a civil infraction ordinance, which you would want to do, because if you write it as a misdemeanor infraction ordinance and somebody wants to fight it, then you have to provide them with an attorney if they're indigent. You don't want to have to do that.
I think ours is civil, correct?
Yeah, so, so most townships have a civil infraction in their blight ordinance. Now, the problem with civil infraction is that that goes in front of the district court judge. So Judge Barton is the judge that hears the blight infractions. And district court is not a court of equity, okay? Equity means being able to order you to clean up. So.
We had to go, we had to go that route.
Yes, and I've had two or three cases with Burt Township, who does have its own zoning, and they handle their blight primarily through their zoning ordinance. They don't have a separate standalone blight ordinance, but I bring that up only to say that within their zoning ordinance, they have had to go to court on a few different occasions to get a court order, an injunction from the circuit judge compelling somebody to clean up blight that violated their zoning ordinance. So, but in order to do that, you have to go to circuit court, so that would be Judge Gauthier's court.
Yeah, that's what we had to do.
Right.
Took a long time.
It does. And so, Judge Barton only has limited equitable powers, okay? She can order people to pay a fine, and she can say, well, you know, you should clean this up, and, you know, every day where there's a separate infraction, you can write another ticket. So theoretically, if your police officers wanted to go out and write a ticket on Monday and it wasn't cleaned up by Tuesday, they could write another ticket, and another ticket, and another ticket. But.
Our police chief tells us, if I heard him correctly, that we really shouldn't do that because the judge will set it aside anyway.
I think that's a very fair assessment, and I agree with his analysis, because I think the judge would look at it as just piling on somebody.
Yeah.
Right, yeah, and I.
So in other words, they're basically saying, okay, well, you got them this time, now you got to go to the next court and get an order.
Yeah, and, I mean, about 10 years ago, when I went to an MTA legal seminar, there was an attorney from the Kalamazoo area, and she did a lot of blight enforcement, and she said, and she gave a presentation on blight enforcement, and she said typically, whenever you have a blight, number of blight tickets, she said, one-third of the people will get a blight ticket and immediately clean up, because they just don't want hassles with the court or the township or whoever. One-third will get a blight ticket, and they will procrastinate and argue about it, and you'll have to take them to court more than once to get it cleaned up, but ultimately, they will comply. And then she said approximately one-third will not comply until they are forced to by a judge. And I think those numbers, from what I can ascertain, are probably pretty close.
I would think so, that's kind of what's happening here, too, so.
Yeah. That was her experience, and she'd done that work for about 20 years down there at the time.
I know who you're talking about, I went to that MTA thing.
Yeah. Yeah, she was very, very knowledgeable.
The other thing I wanted to bring out, like I did here previously, is we have a parks commission, elected parks commission, there's, according to the MTA, anyway, there's less than two dozen left in the entire state.
Mm-hmm.
So, you know, that's kind of a, I don't think they have that anywhere else in the county.
No.
So.
Not that I'm aware of.
And to this very day, I still don't know where the boundaries are.
Mm-hmm.
So, that's one of the first things I'd like to get clarified.
Yeah.
Because of the liability issues.
Right, and there are, there are some holdovers from, you know, statutes that were in existence years ago, and certain boards and commissions and so on got formed under those old statutes and just never got brought up to snuff, you know, under the new statutes.
Well, we are lucky that we do have a great parks commission, I mean, they consider themselves volunteers, but I consider them elected officials because they are elected. And, but they do a great job, it's just, you know, I've never been able to figure out where the boundaries are. And I'll, like I said in previously, my concern is, Parks has their own employees, for example, and something goes wrong, something happens, there's an accident or an incident, and we didn't have the right policies in place, or they didn't have the right policies in place, and that increases our liability, our exposure, especially in the hiring process, equal opportunity stuff.
Mm-hmm.
You know, because ultimately, the parks commission isn't going to pay the bill. The board will pay the bill.
Right.
The council will pay the bill.
Do they have a separate EIN number from the township, or is it all?
No, they don't.
So, it's a bit awkward. So, one of these days, I'd really like somebody to sit down in detail and say, hey Bob, here are the rules of the road. This is their lane, this is your lane.
Is that something that you could mediate, or that someone could mediate, that you'd recommend?
Well.
Between the board and the parks?
Yeah, I mean, it's a possibility. I mean, I don't necessarily think that it is a good idea for the township attorney to be the mediator, but to be more or less, and I don't mean to play word games here, but more or less a facilitator to sit down with, you know, both sides and say, this is maybe how it should, this is a recommendation of how it should be set up, you know.
I'd just like to know the rules under the law.
Right.
You know, are they required? Can we require them to adopt our policies? Or is it all hands off? I mean, right now, we have parks commission employees with no job description.
Mm-hmm.
No protections. And that brings me to another thing. Public Act, I can't remember, 2018, Act 833, apparently on the 19th of February, if the Supreme Court doesn't extend the stay, this accrued sick leave kicks in. So, that's something that we would need help with, and we would have to amend our employee handbook. I think they get, for every 30 hours work, they get one paid, one hour of paid sick leave.
Okay.
And it applies to everybody, seasonal, part-time, full-time, so.
And we'd have to maybe even amend our budget on how we're taking care of that situation, too, so that, it's important to get ahead of that, since it might be coming in as early as February 19th, you said?
Right.
Or they might get a stay, and, you know, it came in with the minimum wage law.
Okay.
And I did read it, because the library has their own attorney, and gave us some stuff, or, you know, we saw some stuff yesterday. But I'm still, I've read it three times, and I'm still confused on, you know, how the accrual, you know, it's supposed to be not less than 40 hours, well, I don't know if you have to wait a year, it's going to be complicated.
And it rolls over, I guess, and stuff.
Yeah, yeah, right.
And then one year, another, it's like, I don't know how all that works.
Yeah, there's posting requirements, we got to get new.
Posters.
New posters.
Yeah.
Oh, boy.
Every year.
I don't know if you're aware of that, but it just popped up, so.
There was something on the Michigan Municipal League website about that, but to be perfectly honest with you, I did not read the full article, I just reviewed that, I get their snippets, and I believe that's where I saw that. But I did not go into it because, as of right now, I don't have any clients that have that issue before them, so, and I haven't been asked to look into that, so, this is.
So it's going to apply to, I think it's even going to apply to our police department, correct?
Yes, unless they have a tighter one than that, if they have a better one than that, it doesn't, but if, you know, they don't, then it would apply to them, so.
Yeah, the state's standards would, are the default standards, but you can have something that's more, like you say, a tighter policy than the state, so. Yeah, if that's the case, and you have a lot of employees, and that's something that should, you know, be looked into fairly quickly.
Any more questions?
No.
Mr. McCarthy, thank you very much for coming.
All right, thank you.
Appreciate it, thanks.
Thank you for asking me, and we'll.
Be careful going home.
I'll be in touch with you.
Yeah, I will drive very slowly going down.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nice seeing everybody.
Well, following up on the interviews, how do we want to handle this? Is this something you want to limit it on for a day or two, a week?
Maybe bring it up on the seventh.
On the seventh, would you feel comfortable?
I want to reread the resumes and think about it. If I have any questions, could I just send you and you forward?
Sure, sure, sure.
I don't anticipate doing that, but.
Okay.
So if anybody has any additional questions, they can contact you, Mike?
Yeah, sure.
Okay.
I'd like to hear some opinions today. Do you have any thoughts?
I thought Tim was really, really knowledgeable. I liked Matt's accessibility and his energy, his enthusiasm, I mean, Tim's been around for, you know, I know, I know.
He has a lot of experience with township law, a lot, that's a big benefit, is. Yeah, SADs and stuff like that. He's zoned into township where Matt is more city, where the larger scale.
City slicker.
But it has benefits, too. Plunkett and Plummy is one of the best ones you can have in the state, too, so that's a plus.
Probably the best in the state.
Yeah.
I like the rules of that.
How do you all feel about us paying them to come for the first few times? I guess we could always pay them just to watch the video.
Yeah.
But, I really would like whoever we pick to just be here two, maybe two meetings.
Well, we're going to discuss that at the February meeting, if that's going to be on our agenda, we can discuss that. I thought they were both very.
I like the fact that he's thinking about expanding his firm and getting a little bit more help in there, too, because with him doing as many townships, even though there might not be as many issues, we're going to have a lot of issues moving forward for a while, with all the different projects that's going on and things like that. And, you know, we've got the sewer project, we've got an additional blight elimination grant maybe coming through this spring. There's things that's moving in this township, and I think, you know, we need some guidance on some of this stuff, and I think that would be, that would be helpful, if you had more help.
I would challenge him as a number of, I think we've done more special assessments than anybody.
Yeah.
I do, I do like, I mean, you know, if you take a piece of paper and put pluses and minuses, the big plus for the first gentleman was the depth. They have all the depth we're ever.
They got the accessibility.
They have all the depth we're ever going to need, because if they have 140 attorneys, they represent a lot of townships, right?
Yeah. Well, and mostly municipalities, counties and cities.
And that might be one question to follow up, how many townships does your firm do throughout the state?
Yeah.
And do any of them have parks commissions? What do you think?
I think they're both, obviously, both qualified. They have different strengths, different weaknesses, I like them both. Could be a tough decision. The question I have on Tim is, you know, how long is he going to be in business? You know, that's, and if he brings associates in, you know, to pick up more of the workload, is he still there to mentor and guide and help be a voice of experience?
Municipal law is a different bird, I mean, you can go to law school and say, I'm going to, and all of a sudden, you know, I think you're going to do personal injury in a municipal law, and that is a different, totally different bird.
So, his basic, biggest strength could be a weakness if he's not going to be there to meet our needs. Yeah, I like Matt, too, because he, you know, is very confident, he said all the right things, of course, but we couldn't necessarily, you know, comment with his depth, it's going to be in terms of business.
How many did he say? Did he have just in Metoski?
Five.
Five attorneys, plus four staff.
Four staff.
And would, we probably would save quite a bit of money on the research by, didn't they have a lower rate in that package?
Yeah, $100 an hour for paralegal.
Yeah, $110 for, $110 for paralegal, $200 for the associates, and $250 for the partner and senior trustees. So we would rarely.
I'd like to both, but we have to decide.
What do you think, Bobby?
It would be a hard decision for me, too.
It is going to be a harder decision, they're very qualified.
Because the strength and weaknesses, like you said.
The library has used Mr. McCarthy, you might want to meet with him. They brought that up yesterday.
Yeah, that's a new issue that just popped up, so.
No, 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 the library has used Mr. McCarthy.
Yeah, but I mean, that, what I was speaking to is the sick leave pay. And it was just a brand new, wow, what was that you were telling about, it spurted off?
Yeah, it is like, it is, so. Well, any more discussion? Public comment? Public comment, yes, sir?
You want me over there?
Only because we want to know who's talking, and when they post it, they want to know who's.
Just to clarify, I'm speaking for myself, myself only, but on the parks commission, we understand they are elected officials, but they also consider themselves as volunteers because they get no money for anything. So I don't think saying they consider themselves volunteers when they are actually elected officials is a fair statement.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Public comment, still going?
Very quickly, the attorney discussion is.
Very quickly, the attorney discussion is far more complicated than what it appears on its surface. The couple of things that I want to point out, and I admit, I, too, while I have a preference, I can see the pluses and minuses on both sides. Mr. Cross did quietly and subtly offer the fifty-dollar-an-hour concession even for partners. I don't know if you heard that, but he did do it. So that would put everybody on that level playing field at the associate rate of two-hundred. Then you jump down to the paralegal or the legal secretary at the hundred, hundred-and-ten range. I don't know if Tim would be willing, you know, I mean, his rate is his rate.
He's got two different rates. His two-hundred for hourly litigation is two-hundred-and-forty.
But so, you know, you might need to see if you can get that to be apples and apples just while sitting here. Plunkett and Cooney represents Bay Township in Charlevoix County. That is basically a triangle between Boing, Potoski, and wherever, but it's, there's lots of Bay Counties in Michigan. It's that one. Their meetings are the second Thursday at six, so that would not be a conflict for them. I like the fact that he's a fireman. I'd like to know how long, what rank, what department, how much seniority. That brings a good perspective for us dealing with the fire department, maybe putting more demands on them or asking them for more things, and also giving them more resources and more The other thing that came up in conversation today that I didn't think about previously is I don't think anywhere in our handbook do we have the override compliance severance statement that says if any part of this document is replaced by a more recent law, that the rest of it remains. We need to look at that.
Could you say that again, Ron?
There's a, most, almost all contracts.
Severability.
Contracts, handbooks, they have a severability clause, your police department contract has one, and it says that if a court or any regulatory body like the EPA or OSHA invalidates any portion of the document, that the rest of it still remains invalid. I don't think we have that in the handbook as it relates to that minimum wage thing. It concerned me a little that Tim was not more familiar with that, by the way.
Say that again, because you said the rest of it's invalid or valid?
No, the rest of it remains valid. It's only the thing that it addresses that is false, and the rest of it remains valid, so, thank you.
Public comment? Board comment? Anybody? Board comments? Okay, motion to adjourn?
Something.
Moving, Bob. Thank, folks, thanks for coming out.
I'll be right back.
Been a little while.
Good thing you're down.